Commissioners meeting to order, again welcome. Thank you so much for taking time out of your day to be here. At this time, I would ask Vice Chair Barbie for the implication and the pledge of allegiance. Vice Chair.
Everyone, please bow your head. Your heavenly Father, I want to thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. Please guide and direct us. Let your will enter our hearts so we can do the business of the county, that we do it to suit the people of county. I ask that you bless this nation and help us to come closer to you, Lord. Please bless all of the county employees and the citizens of Stanley County. In Jesus' name I pray.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. At this time, I would look for a motion to the approval of the or adjustments to the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we pull item number two from the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to pull item two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, Commissioner Hatley, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, explain the reason we're pulling this.
Yes, our presenter tonight was Mr. Curtis Fur, and Curtis called earlier and had to take his father to the hospital. So if you remember Curtis' dad, we certainly appreciate it. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will pull item number two. All right, at this time, I have several that wanted to speak at public comment. First one is Dr. Dennis.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Efferd and members of the board. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the county commissioners for committing the funding necessary to make our schools safer and adding additional SROs to schools without SRO. Thanks to your funding and funding from other municipalities in the county, we will now have an SRO at every school when the 2324 school year begins. Having an SRO at every school is a needed resource that not all of the districts in our state can claim they have. As I said before, SROs are not just on campus in case of a shooter, they also provide a myriad of other safety protections, and they are also a positive liaison between our families and students and law enforcement. Thank you again for making the decision to make all of our schools safer by adding these additional SROs, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker I have is Mr. Ron Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I'm an old county manager, so I quite enjoy these meetings when I come to them to see how local government is continuing to function. I'm with an organization called Foundation Forward. We built and gifted to the citizens of Stanley County the charters of freedom, which are located here in Alamoor. We have developed a supplemental piece of information that I'm here tonight to gift to the county commissioners on behalf of all the citizens of Stanley County. I was making a presentation in a community not far from here. In fact, I'll tell you, it was in Monroe. And I finished my presentation, and a young councilman, an African American, said to me, "Mr. Lewis, thank you for your presentation. You did a superb job, but you didn't do anything for me. You have left me out of the loop." So we went back to our conference table. Our organization is relatively small, there are eight of us, and we decided that we had a problem. And we developed what is called the Civil Rights Amendments. We combined the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th amendments to the Constitution that makes us all the same. Every American citizen has all the same rights and privileges that we, with pale skin, have now, where we're all the same. I had an opportunity to go back to Monroe about six months later after we had produced this document, and the young black councilman had tears running down his cheeks when we presented the Civil Rights Amendments, because we responded to his request and his concern to make all Americans the same. The beauty of the Constitution is as our society changes, it can be amended to meet the needs of our country. We want to gift this to you to display in an appropriate area. If you want to share it for a period of time with the school system, that would be okay with us as well. But hopefully you'll find a prominent place to display what we have come to call the Civil Rights Amendments. In a week or so, your manager will get a letter authenticating that this is an original print for the purpose of displaying the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th amendments. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman, unless you would have any questions of me.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions for Mr. Lewis?
Just a quick question. I said, just to read amendment right there, so they're exactly the amendments as they are in the Constitution, correct?
That is correct. They're verbatim.
Sir, we certainly do appreciate it, and we will find a prominent place to hang that.
Very good.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Next person I have is, I'm sorry, I can't read your writing, Shane Allman? Shane, right?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Shane, and what spurred me to do this was about two weeks ago when the zoning and planning board, there was a developer come to, wanted to develop some land, and it just seemed to me that the county voted against it, or the board voted against it, and the county residents didn't want it, but it seemed like the residents' voice, the county planning board, nobody's voice is heard. And so this isn't to me about farm land preservation, it's about how developers are, everybody that are bringing in for our school, for our school system. It's about the kids. It's about how we don't have adequate funding for teachers. And I went through research, and I went through people all over the county. I asked, I even talked to people on our planning boards, our commissioner boards, even folks at the county education level, and talked to them about it. And I just come up with a few things that I would love for the commissioners to go over and, you know, maybe put something together where I don't think it's the taxpayers' responsibility to foot the bill for our infrastructure, our schools, and it puts a burden on our fire departments. Anything that's out in the county, it puts a burden on. And I don't know, I don't know why the county don't, I don't know if people see it or if they don't see it, I don't know. But when you have three or four kids every week coming into a county, you have to do something. And Stanley County can't retain teachers. And I would, part of this, what I would call a developer's fee, as you can read it, it would go to the school system, and part of it would go back to our county. And so I would just like for y'all to take it home with you and just read over it, but this is something that, like I said, I have talked to people throughout the whole county, and it's not just something that I've come up with, but it's folks that are around the county that feel that their voices ain't heard anymore, and so, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I certainly appreciate it. Next person is Sam Walker.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman Efferd, and Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the text amendment, I believe it's agenda number eight, ZA 2305, Group Care Facility. My name is Sam Walker, I'm with the Keith Corporation, and we've been working for several years now with Ward Blanchard, he's going to speak in just a moment. But I wanted to just speak in support of this text amendment. We've been working with Bailey and Bob, appreciate all of the conversations that we've had. Believe we've touched base several times via phone as well, through Carla. What Ward is looking to do is provide a community amenity, something that will help heal this community through his institute. I'll let him speak on that in just a little bit. And I think what Bob and his team have done is create a really good opportunity to be able to provide some of these amenities in the county, particularly finding an acreage that's over eight acres and then has to be a licensed facility by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, I think it's 27G. So that would be a bona fide institute that would provide health care in this community. The current zoning makes it really hard and difficult to find an existing property that can facilitate that type of use, and so I'm in support of the text amendment change. And then furthermore, I just wanted to say, in support of the text amendment change, it wouldn't be a blanket risk where properties could just overnight be turned into these types of facilities. They'd have to go through a special use permit application through the Board of Adjustment. So we think that's a responsible change and would allow the county to have further amenities and needs, amenities and facilities that address the needs of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I have two more folks that's actually signed up to speak for that. We're going to have a public hearing on that item. I mean, you're more than welcome to come speak now, or if you want to wait until we have the public hearing, I will be asking.
Yeah, I see some confused faces, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This might be a sign that one of these.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
If you guys want to come and speak now, or you want to wait until the public hearing on that item?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay. Ward, I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Yeah, Blanchard.
Blanchard.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners, Chairman. Yes, my name is Ward Blanchard. I've been a born and raised Tar Heel and small-town community guy my whole life, and the past 20 years, I've been spending my life dedicated to fighting this opioid epidemic that ravages our communities, our state. And in 2018, Stanley County was voted the worst overdose epidemic in county and the state, and at the time, we said we had the evidence-based resources, we just lacked the funding and lacked the resources. And we really looked to bring those resources to this community and serve this community with this Vickers Store Road property. You know, it previously was a resource to the community in senior living and serving the needs of the people of this town, and we looked to continue that use in serving the community just with a different need. You know, 2019, North Carolina was rated the highest rate in overdoses to the lowest rate of available resources of any state in the country. And so this text amendment allows us to really serve this community. And like I said, I was born and raised in a small town, and it takes a village to raise a child, well, it takes a village to save one. And so it could really use the help and assistance in the Blanchard Institute coming to serve this community.
Sir, certainly appreciate it. Next person I have is Debbie Dennis.
I think, I think we're good, we can skip that one.
You're good? Okay, all right, great. Okay, at this time, we'll have, we'll go to item number three, Region F Aging Advisory Committee Appointments, and our presenter is Ms. Pamela Sullivan.
Good evening Chairman Efferd and fellow Commissioners. I'm here tonight to present appointments for the Region F Aging Advisory Committee. Stanley County is represented with three delegates and one alternate on the Central Atlanta Region F Aging Advisory Committee. Delegate member Nicole Ashton and alternate member Roger Udi both have terms that expired of June 30th of 2023. They both have agreed to serve again if reappointed and have submitted updated applications. The RFAC requests that both Nicole and Roger be reappointed, the delegate Ashton for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2025, and the alternate, Mr. Udi, for reappointment for an alternate, as an alternate, for one-year term ending June 30th, 2024. I request that both Ms. Ashton and Mr. Udi both be reappointed, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer this.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. Any questions for Ms. Sullivan?
I make a motion that we listen to the recommendation of the board and reappoint Nicole Ashton and Roger to the board.
Okay, I have a motion.
Just wanted to say that she's the one that bought back a dash, Nicole, she's worried a dash right now. I've talked to her, and she enjoys being on that, that board and likes to be involved.
Okay, all right, I have a motion, Commissioner Shulow, in a second, by Commissioner Crump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion clear.
Thank you for your time.
All right, our next item is a department presentation of the library, and our presenter is Ms. Sarah Hahn. Ms. Hahn, welcome.
Thank you. I'll give it back out. I should have to get back in.
There you go.
Good evening Chairman Efferd and fellow Commissioners. I am Sarah Hahn, the current Library Director for Stanley County, and I have a quick presentation for you that will only be quick if you listen quick. I have a lot to say, and I decided to take my chance here and get in as much as I could. So I will be brief, but effective, so bear with me there. I started with Stanley County in 2014 as the Children and Youth Services Librarian Assistant, and then in 2016 as the Children and Youth Services Librarian, and now only nine months ago, a very quick nine months, became Library Director. So I have been with our county for quite some time and have seen a lot of changes that I would have loved to have had the opportunity to make and was so excited to have gotten the opportunity now, and I appreciate all of your support in making those dreams that we've had as a staff and as we've heard feedback from our community become a reality. So I'm going to share a few quick things we've already done with you and just sort of get you all up to date on what the library can offer the community and take this opportunity for anyone who watches back to also know what we have so that you can all come and get your library cards. So we've done just a few very simple updates that were minimal cost and high impact, and we've heard lots of positive comments from our patrons in the community. We took our old logo and wanted to mirror the land-air-water success of the county to now have our new service literacy support success, as we felt that that was encompassing everything that our library system has to offer, just like our county logo showcases all of the different available resources that we have there. We've taken just a few basic, simple things like some greenery and added just a warmer, welcoming atmosphere to our otherwise plain exterior. So we've just added a few basic features there. We added some new branding updates, so we have our logo in several different places to give a more complete vision to the space, and some official shirts and things that we've never had before. So all of our staff were excited to shop local and be able to support our local business and having our new resources. We've updated our new patron brochures to include more up-to-date information and highlight a lot of the different things that we have now, including our NC Cardinal library status, which I'll discuss with you briefly in a moment. And so we just wanted to share a new vision, a new bolder, more welcoming, warmer statement to be able to hopefully get lots of patrons coming back in and continuing to use our services and resources. Highlights of all of our different programs we currently offer from birth through adult, lots of different things going on. And one of the requests that we've had for years has been for private workspace or study space for Zoom meetings and interviews, which we've never been able to offer. It's just always sort of out in the open and try to whisper. So we were able to take two of our spaces downstairs that were outside of our meeting room and were coat closets, and transform them into private study rooms, which we call our think tanks. So these were our coat closets that were used for chair storage and people's storage at times. And now these are our new study spaces, which have been extremely popular, and just a little bit of paint and some basic furniture made a big difference. We've had lots of people enjoy the space and be able to use the Wi-Fi. We have it stocked with our basic leftover office supplies that people have appreciated. We have key to entry, so our new doors were provided by our Friends of the Library fundraising, and our staff have the key to enter those and to just increase security and controlled use of the space. And we are having an outstanding response from them. We put acoustic panels inside because we were trying to figure out how to take the just sort of empty cement walls and make it a little bit more friendly and not so echoey, so you can't hear your neighbors anymore. We also included remote control fans, as they are not, those little rooms were not set up with HVAC, so that helps to circulate some air and things like that. A lot of this was patron requests that they would say, "Hey, I really like your space, but it got a little stuffy." So we added a fan, so we're really enjoying sort of letting this come alive with our patron feedback. And also, a new LED light in each one made a big difference. So we're averaging weekly since opening the space in May, 20 to 30 users. We've got tutors coming in constantly, they're asking about reserving the spaces, and we've said, "We hope for now, we don't have to do that. We want them to be popular enough that they are used, but not so popular that we need another Google Calendar." So, so far, that has worked well. We have increased programming, our groups are growing. We're averaging in the 80s for our Wednesday storytime and in the 90s for our Thursday baby storytime. With such success that we outgrew our space upstairs in the learning lounge pretty quickly and have now moved downstairs to our meeting room. If you've been in our meeting room before, it didn't look like this. We tried to make it a little more friendly and child-oriented with our recycled rugs and fire-safe light filters. And so we've been able to just sort of make that a little bit warmer. We also can transform it into our sensory lab through collaboration with a Bright Ideas grant through the North Carolina State Library that we received last year for $15,000. And we've partnered with PIFER and the Occupational Therapy Program for those students to help us staff the space and serve different neurodiverse individuals and groups, which has met some of their curriculum needs as well. So that's been a really neat partnership and a new way to get to know our neighbors. We've been able to do additional branch programming and cross-train a lot of our staff to be able to supplement and have some extra help, and so these are some programs that were popular at our branches. This is a new art and animation club for teens and young adults. We're trying to add additional Saturday programming and make our staff work out in a way that we can accommodate the front desk and being able to offer different programs on different Saturdays to accommodate requests from the community. We are continuing the outreach in our school system. Nicole Hopkins is our new Children and Youth Services Librarian, and she was a school media specialist at East Alamoor for years. So she is in tune with the community and knows how to speak to the children, and they love Ms. Hopkins. And they're so glad that she can now serve them year-round, so that's what we keep hearing. She might be the best reason that our summer reading program will succeed this year. They're all coming to see Ms. Hopkins. We are continuing our outreach through grant funding. We have our Rentson Read Laundromat Literacy Program, where we were able to turn a storage corner in the corner laundromat to a new family literacy center. Now it is stocked with books, this was a before picture, but we are really excited to have a place down the road from us where we can meet the community where they are and just provide additional space for them to be able to have literacy resources and just another platform for us to be able to reach families. And we've also partnered with the Partnership for Children to be able to discuss the possibility of pop-up diaper pantries and things in the future for their resources to share. It is summer at the library, so we are currently offering birth-through-adult programming and reading incentives, which prevents summer slide for literacy rates, and it gets new adults in the library to bring their children and get excited about new programming. You can see we have a busy June and July, we've got lots of things at all locations. We started with a big truck day at the History Center in June, and it was held on the 24th, where we had 17 vehicles for families to explore, and we partnered with all kinds of different organizations, which are listed for you there. Thank you Commissioner King for providing some tractors for us. The kids loved being able to just enjoy and climb and explore, and they were so excited. As you can see from this picture, we had the water truck back this year, which was a huge success. If anyone is curious about how well a splash pad would do, we have lots of videos to show that. It would need a fence, I can promise you that. We had 850 visitors fill our downtown, which is an increase from the 650 that came last year, and the event increased participation for our History Center programming, now averaging about 50 participants weekly. And that is to focus on her working nine-to-five exhibit that she currently has at the History Center. Just a few pictures of some of our kids enjoying the History Center and those resources. We are doing All Together Now is our theme this year, so this is our current meeting room as it stands, so remember this picture for a few minutes later. But this is how we show movies with our projector cart, and those movies are always very well-attended on Friday afternoons. So we are working on All Together Now is to talk about collaborating in the community. So these are just a few pictures from our summer programs packed out with families. We have a new entry gate in our children's room, which has added increased security and safety for our youngest patrons and peace of mind for the moms who are trying to juggle all of the children and the books. Also, we are continuing outreach at our branches through community programs as part of working together for All Together Now, and we wanted to focus on unity within our melting pot through multilingual storytime, which is something new that we've added. I don't know if we have that sound here. So this is Ms. Nicole saying, "Hello, how are you? Good morning." And then she goes through and teaches the children how to translate to Spanish and tells them how to say, "Hello, good morning, how are you?" And it has been so successful, the kids come in and tell us good morning in Spanish. I need to attend more of the storytimes as they continue to learn their words. So now we are doing baby sign language at our Thursday program and increasing communication through literacy that way, and then our Wednesday programs. And that also supplements our Spanish selection. We've learned lots of partnering things this year, including the cooperative extension helped us hatch quail and butterflies, and that was something I had never done before. And my only complaint was that we had to stare at the eggs for weeks, and then we only got the babies for an hour. And I said, "We need to, we need to revamp this program, I need the babies a little bit longer." So the kids really enjoyed that. We were able to do different lifecycle stories and bring in a science and a STEM kind of aspect that we don't often have the opportunity to do. We have added adult summer reading back, which we haven't done in several years, but we tried to really think outside of the box. Our new admin assistant, Teresa Crump, is very animated and excited and says, "We can do this, let's just do this." And so I love that, and we figured out different ways to do lots of new things, including developmental disabilities storytime, which one of our circulation associates runs for us, and we have different group homes that come and participate, and that's very well-attended. We have a monthly book club for adults that is on Tuesday during a lunch break, so we've had really great attendance with that, and lots of local authors that are coming in and. in and interacting with the library and making connections that they've enjoyed. Book journaling keeps up with what you're reading, and junk journaling brings your junk to the library to make a memory of what you're reading or what you're doing. So that's been really popular. We're having a fashion show tomorrow. And this is one of those things when Teresa said, let's do a fashion show, I said, why? And then we realized what a neat way to be able to participate in with our downtown neighbors and get people being downtown, shopping downtown, supporting local. So we are having several different boutiques. URI Dash is participating. I've asked them to drive a bike down the runway. I guess we'll see if that happens. But we're gonna, we have our meeting room set up like a runway, and we're gonna have lots of local boutiques displaying some of their seasonal things. And then we hope that people will shop and eat downtown while they're there as well and maybe get a library card. We have local author meet-and-greets coming up, yoga at the library, bingo. We have different book clubs that are happening at our branches now, which we haven't had before, which is very exciting. We've partnered with Hospice to offer an Understanding Your Season of Grief class for adult programming. The Center for Prevention Services is offering us safe storage and properly storing medication. State Employees has asked to do a Reality of Money seminar that is like a simulated, now you're an adult, this is your job, which apartment do you choose? Which car can you afford? Which I wish I'd had in high school. So I think that'll be really popular. Shade gardening with the agricultural extension. And then we have all of our craft programs in our branches are coming back, and we've got lots of different hobbies. We're trying to sort of get a little bit of anything for everyone out at the library. So one of our last things to discuss, thank you for listening so far, is that we are now an NC Cardinal library, which doesn't mean anything if you're not a library person, which is what we've learned when we're like, we're NC Cardinal! And people will say, what is that? So it means that all of those counties that are in green, your library card will work at starting July 26. If you drive there now, they will let you use it, but then you have to drive back to return your book. But after July 26, your card will work at any of those locations. So when you drive to the beach, you can check out your book at the library there and bring it back home, finish reading it, and then return it here. And all of the shipping and everything is included. That is a free program for the first two years through the State Library through a grant that we received. And then the cost is almost nothing compared to all of the software that we were paying for before. So it's a huge cost savings for us. It's an incredible collaboration opportunity, and we're really excited to be part of the statewide lending program. This now will mean that we have 7.9 million items in our catalog and 51 library systems with 223 physical branches through North Carolina that we will be able to share resources with. And that will drastically increase our book budgets through collaborative funding and our patron satisfaction, because we won't have long hold times. And we will be able to, just be able to not have to buy five copies of the same book, the newest bestseller, or 10. We can get it next week for you. And then just a few upcoming goals that you'll see. Thanks to your gracious votes, we will overhaul our meeting room with new doors, AV flooring, tables, and chairs. So our renovation for our meeting room is coming soon. Thank you. We will have our vehicle replaced, our 2001, 187,000-mile-old girl, who has gotten us where we've needed to go, will be replaced this year. So thank you very much for that. We have exterior cameras that we'll be adding to our building, which will increase security and visibility in our downstairs entrance and book drop area. This is one view of our entrance there and another from the street where we'll be adding cameras. And then you'll see future requests, because I'm already working on my wish list for the next year, to continue increased, continued flooring from what will be replaced in the meeting room, which is just right around the corner there, into the hallway and down this hallway, where I would love to add an art gallery wall with local art from schools and our art program that we are hosting at the library, just to continue to give students and families a reason to come in and see what they have and what they've done and to showcase that. And then I know that our elevator has been on the docket for a while, but I wanted you to just have a visual, if you haven't visited lately, that providing a patron elevator would meet daily requests and needs for something other than our current freight elevator for patrons who are not able to propel themselves up the ramp. And then we know that to whom much is given, much is required, and we count it a privilege to serve our Stanley County community. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'm open to them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. We certainly appreciate it. Any questions for Ms. Hahn from the Commissioners?
Thank you.
Very good presentation. I know we don't own the building down in Norwood, but they put a nice little colorful mural
Yes.
around the whole outside of it. And then someone asked me down there, how much, how much money does, do we give you guys for book, book budget for each?
For each branch. Our total book budget that you all assign is $90,000. And then we split it up based on statistics and how their budget has done the year before and how all of that works out. The Albemarle location, split between adult fiction, nonfiction, juvenile, children, the entire Albemarle collection is $37,500. Baden receives $4,125. Locust is $12,650. Norwood and Oakboro are both $5,775. And then the History Center has the Heritage Room, which gets $500 for certain documents that they update each year.
Another question I get from people is the sculpture out front. Do y'all have any plans to paint it back to its original thing and highlight the artist that did the sculpture?
So the Stanley County Arts Council has expressed interest in collaborating with us on updating that, restoring it. Lots of conversations around that. I haven't heard any details on that. I would love to have that happen this fiscal year to improve the space, especially as we add the exterior cameras and, and try to improve the space. Certainly, we would love for that to, to take place.
Thank you. Very good presentation, very colorful.
Thank you.
Stuff you've done for the library.
Great.
Make reading fun.
Thank you.
Sarah, thank you for all that you and your staff do. I mean, sitting on that board, I see all the hard work y'all put into it behind the scenes, and it's amazing. I mean, before I became a Commissioner, I can't say that I experienced a lot of opportunities at the library, but to see what you guys are doing as far as helping the community fill out applications for jobs, I mean, all the outreach y'all are doing is just amazing. So thank you so much and your team. Make sure you express that, please.
Thank you. And we are all very much in support also of helping to fill the digital divide and the broadband initiative and all of that, as well as we interact with people daily, many times a day, who don't have access to internet and try their best to get to the library for help with computer services. We also partnered with the Community College earlier this year to provide basic computer skills and basic internet skills. And those classes were amazing, and we have plans to do the advanced level in the fall when they start back as well.
Ms. Hahn, I just want to say thank you so much for the love that you're pouring into your position, because it's, it's so evident. I loved every bit of this presentation. It's one of the best ones I have seen. And I can't, I've lost count the number of times that I've heard people in the community that have talked about what's going on, the new stuff that's going on at the library. And so, I know you have a team, but thank you for leading. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. That means a lot.
Anyone else?
Ms. Hahn, thank you again so much for your presentation, and we appreciate all the hard work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
The next item, item number five, is a Board of Adjustments appointment, and our presenter is Mr. Rensberg.
Well, good evening Commissioners. Thank you for having me here. Sadly, I am the one presenting to you and not Bailey tonight. And as you can tell, we've got a lot of different things on our agenda. But the first one is, is the, the basic annual sort of visit to you. And I apologize, my presentation is more black and white. Not nearly as colorful. I'm not that creative. So Board of Adjustment appointments, we have that first. There are seven members, or actually nine members, two, seven regular and one, or two alternates for the Board of Adjustment. We have two regular positions and one alternate position, which have expired. Obviously, they serve until new members are appointed. The current members are willing to be reappointed, although I know Devron Fur has been on for a long time. He was appointed in 2014. Richard Cosgrove was appointed in 2020. And Michael Fleming was appointed in 2021, although his was actually an unexpired term that he's filling. Other current members, Cynthia Fish, Michael Efferd, Billy Franklin Lee, Brenda Farmer, Rick Johnson, and Judy Nelms. This is, of course, an important board. They here rules, make rulings on variances, special use permits, appeals, and other related items, usually in a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing, including special use permits, like we may talk about a little bit with dealing with group care facilities. The work is somewhat technical. The board sits both as judge and jury in these cases. Any appeals of the actions of that board are to Superior Court. So it's a, it's a kind of a technical sort of operation. A variance case has to be approved by a four-fifth vote of that board. Partly because of that, that's why it's important to have a couple of members that are in alternate positions, because sometimes someone has a conflict of interest of some type, and they need to recuse themselves. And you still need to be able to have that four-fifth vote in the case of a variance. But it also works for special use permits and anything. They can recuse themselves if they have any conflict of interest of some type there. And there are all sorts of checkboxes they have to check off if they do have a conflict. It is good to have someone that has some background in property or that sort of relations, legal processes, surveying, that sort of thing's not required, but it's always a good idea. And it's good to have some experience remain on the board, but obviously, again, we've got a good, good experience board, Judy Nelms being your last appointment, and she has served well as an alternate and has already been seated a couple of times for our various meetings. But most, many of the other members have had numerous years of experience. And of course, Rick Johnson used to be a county employee in the Tax Department and had a good background there. But, you know, I'll leave the selection up to you. We don't have, we don't come with a recommendation. I just know those are three very fine board appointees, and I think those are the only three names that I'm aware of that have been presented before you. But if you have other names or others to consider, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you, Mr. Rensberg. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
He would, he would be great in that position as a full-time, yes. He, I'm sure he is willing to do that. I have not asked him that question.
I was just thinking that since Mr. Fur's been on there since 2014, maybe we move him to the alternate position and appoint Mr. Fleming. I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Cosgrove and Mr. Fleming and move Devron to the alternate. I'm sorry, I'm writing.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion. Second, Commissioner Crump, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. O's. Motion carries. Thanks, sir. Don't go nowhere.
All right. Thank you, Board. Appreciate that. Again, fine, all these are fine individuals. They do a great job.
All right, our next item is ZA 23-02, text amendment, temporary use of camper trailers. The presenter again is Mr. Rensberg.
Yeah, here we go. All right, so yeah, ZA 23-02. This is a request that, that happens quite often here. Bailey and I especially get this call, Tim as well. It's not happening quite as much as it was about two years ago when the housing was really in, really, really, housing market was really hot. People would, you know, suddenly sell their house and then didn't have a place to go. But they might have had a piece of land, and then they wanted to put their camper on it so they could live there while they're doing it, because they couldn't even find an apartment or a rental house or something like that to slip into. We're not hearing that as much as we did two years ago, but it still does happen. And so two, three, four times, five times a month or more, we'll get a call going, I've got this piece of land, I want to build a house, can I put my camper on it while I'm building the house? So that was, that's the gist of where this came from. So the text amendment would, would go through and actually allow that to happen. It would permit a recreational vehicle under the accessory building zoning fee, which is currently just $20. But we would, again, there's certain rules that would be in place, and I know you've got a copy of the proposed language there, should be highlighted in yellow. It adds a section to Section 407.2 of the ordinance that would allow in the RAR 20, R40, and RR residential districts, up to two consecutive six-month periods to be issued if, as long as construction is carried out diligently. So they're gonna have to have a permit for a house before they start this process. But, but in the meantime, while they, when they pull the permit, they're gonna live in there while the house is under construction. That's, that's kind of the, the idea. And again, if that fails, if, or if they don't complete the house in time, it can be extended for six more months by staff. But then after that, has to go before the Board of Adjustment, make them explain basically, hey, why aren't we getting on with getting this house constructed? So that's, that's kind of it. Or they end their use of the camper. Otherwise, it's a violation. So I won't, I won't read all the way through the memo. I'm sure you've had a chance to do that. But if, are there any questions or comments about this? I know it's been tried in other places. It's sometimes worked out well. We don't know how well this will happen. It does happen. I can tell, I can promise you, and you've probably seen it in the county, where people have done this. And of course, we're complaint-driven, so we don't always know about it till later on the process or building inspection folks or our code enforcement officer, Tim Swearingen, shows up on the property and goes, hmm, someone's living in that camper. But again, if there's no complaints, we sometimes just say, okay, well, you know, can't tell if they're there full-time or if they just set the camper up on the property or what. But if they start connecting to the septic system or trying to run electrical lines, then we, we start realizing, hey, something's going on here. We have to tell them, no, you can't do that. Got to find another place to live.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Rensberg?
Mr. Rensberg, is there a, if someone puts a camper out and they go beyond the two-six-month periods, is there any type of fine that's charged?
The, once we realize there's a violation, and if the, we probably would cite them, let it go before the Board of Adjustment if the person wants to apply that way. Let the board decide if there's a justification somehow for that. If the board decided no, then, then the fine would stand, or we continue with that process, same as we would any other zoning violation. So, fine. So it's $50 for the first fine, and then 200 for the next, and then 500. And it can be charged daily. So if you start, you know, it, so if you see it happen, and you, we usually give them, you know, here, here's your, gonna be your fine, go back 10 days later, 15 days later, see, have they, you know, have they complied? If not, oh, we'll issue another fine. Go a little bit later. And then, of course, we can, could really start piling it on if we wanted to, but that's, you know, that's not our goal. Our goal is to get them to comply. But we'll, we'll charge the fine if necessary.
Certainly with supply chain issues and construction, that would be one of those permissible things, as long as you're seeing production.
That's right. And then, yeah, yeah, exactly. And I think that would be a consideration if we get to that 12 months. Be before the Board of Adjustment, and that's something they could certainly, hey, you know, we've been wait, you know, especially, who knows what the supply chain will be like in two years? So if suddenly we're, you know, there are no windows available, we can't get the house built, then, okay, there's, there's a justification to say, okay, you got six more months or whatever.
All right. Any more questions? All right, at this time, I will open up a, a public hearing regarding ZA 23-02. Are there anyone here to either speak for or against your proposed text change? All right, hearing done, I will close the public hearing at this time. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment to amend Section 407.2 of the Stanley County zoning ordinance to allow the use of camper trailers, which meet certain criteria, to be utilized during construction of a primary residence. This will allow property owners to utilize their own property while constructing, construction is underway on their home.
And a second by Commissioner Vice Chairman Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Send mo. Thanks, sir. Our next item is ZA 23-04, increase lot size if public water or sewer is not available. Our presenter again, Mr. Renssberg.
All right, and this, this one, the language gets confusing, and I must admit, it's, I tried to simplify it on my little screen here to, to maybe make sense out of it. It's just the way the wording is, it gets kind of double negatives and it gets confused. But anyhow, the, the basic idea is to amend Section 701 of the zoning ordinance to require parcels in the RA, R40, R20, and R10 residential zoning districts to have larger minimum lot sizes, which are 40,000 square feet, for the RA and R40 districts, 20,000 for R20 and 15,000 for R10, if the lot does not have both public utility water or public utility sewer service available. Okay? So a larger lot size will be required if they don't have both water and sewer. If they have, they're missing one of them, then it's, it's, then it's got to be the larger lot size. If they've got both of them in place, then it can be the smaller lot size, as, as we currently have in the ordinance. It's a little complicated, I will admit. Let me go through part of this. It's been, been a lot of discussion even with the planning board about this as we went through, because it's been proposed at two different planning board meetings, and they finally, on June 12th, voted to recommend approval of the language that you've got before you. And it doesn't change much, and I'll, I'll go ahead and flip to that slide, I think. There we go. Well, I'll go through these bullet points real quick. Item was tabled at the planning board meeting, then they brought it back up in June. This request relates to a recommendation from the 2040 Land Use Plan Committee members to increase minimum lot sizes where water and sewer are not available. Currently, it's water or sewer, and especially in the R20 and R10 districts. As I said, current language allows for smaller lot sizes if either public water or public sewer are available in the R40, R20, R10 zoning districts. Minimum lot sizes in RA zoning are currently 30,000 square feet, no matter whether water or sewer or whatever is available, but in the watershed designated areas, which is in the eastern part of the county, 40,000 square feet are required. So that designation wasn't in there dealing with utilities. This would increase minimum residential lot size in any area of the county that does not have both public water and public sewer service. In general, the smallest lot size, this has been told to me by environmental health folks and so on, that can support a standard septic system and a repair area is approximately 15,000 square feet. You know, all depends on soil and soil conditions. Again, this, this really, if you read the land use plan, it's not really specified that this is a requirement or a request, but I know in a lot of the discussions that we had leading up to this, kept getting pointed out that where water or sewer, it really should be water and sewer. So, so that was one of the things that kind of drilled into my head as we went along. And this, this would accomplish that particular task. And I say, I know it's a little confusing, but that, that solves it. The, the language change is, is minimal, it's just what's highlighted in yellow on this, because in the other, this is, this is our chart that shows the minimum lot size requirements and setback requirements in Section 701. And it goes on to have the R40 and R20 and all the other districts, but it doesn't change those. The only one it really changes is the RA district, and then changes the reference information that you see there for letters A and B at the bottom of your screen now, minimum lot size when either public water or sewer is not provided. So, so, and then the minimum lot size when both water and sewer is provided. So, so it goes back and, again, both water and sewer have to be available for the smaller lot size. I don't know, I'm gonna stop with that, I guess, but if there are questions, again, I know it's kind of confusing, but the idea is to increase the lot sizes where, and it does affect if someone wants to subdivide property in the future or how they could do it, because they're gonna have to have 80,000 square feet to split a lot in the future as opposed to 60,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Renssberg?
I called Mr. Renssberg earlier today to discuss the wording on some of this and the future land use plan, which is gonna play a big impact on rural preservation farm area. And so I know we've got some work to do with the planning board and everything, but I want to make sure that none of this was gonna be affecting the land use plan when we get it.
Right. I can, I can share, I guess, that the planning board will be meeting on, it's a little late this month because of conflicts, but July 24th, and at that meeting, they'll have a proposal to consider, which will potentially come to you, that would recommend that the minimum lot size for areas that are designated as farm preservation area in the land use plan, and that's a lot of the county, and it's mostly RA zoning, would require a minimum lot size of 60,000 square feet. But that's, that'd be for the planning board to discuss at their meeting on, on July 24th. Potentially, it could be before you at your August meeting. Okay. All right, so again, it has nothing to do with this amendment, I guess, so I'm, I'm in the future here. There's a proposal that is written out that will be before, that will add another line to this very diagram here under RA, and it would be 60,000 square feet for areas that are designated as farmland preservation area, or excuse me, rural preservation area in the land use plan. So if you go, currently, if you go on the GIS site for the county, the map site, mapping site, there's a tab down there that says future land, or future land use designation, future land use area. If you click on that, you'll see primary growth, secondary growth, and rural preservation areas. That's the prime, the main ones you'll see. There's an airport overlay area too, and that sort of thing, but, but those are the main three. And so anything that is, is a green color, so if you go in there and everything's labeled green, is that rural preservation area. And so if it's, oh, percentage of the county land area, it's, for our zoning jurisdiction, it's probably 80%. It's, it's 70 or 80%, it's somewhere in there. It, it's a large percentage of the, I don't, I mean, I don't know the specific at all, but it's a, uh, yes, oh, sure. Yeah, we would, we would, we bring you a map of that as that comes before you, and we'll have it before the planning board too.
Can we get that tomorrow?
Yeah, it's, and, and you can, given a few minutes, I could pull it up on the screen now probably, but that's, again, that's not this amendment, doesn't affect this. And it's, it's, it's right there on the county website.
Yeah, I know it doesn't affect this, but the land, or the land use plan was specified in that area, five acres.
Five acres, that's right. So that's something to consider and see how much you want to head in that direction. I know there was, the message I got kind of through, through channels here was that let's, let's at least get it to, to 60, and that was, so that's what we've aimed for. But as a board, you can, you know, you, you certainly tell us what, what you want, and we'll, between Andy and myself, we'll listen, look and, and see what we can do. I will, again, doesn't affect this particular minute, although, again, we're increasing that, again, anytime you bump this up, you think about, you gotta think about the, all the effects. And one of the effects is if someone wants to subdivide their property, well, if, if it's 40,000 square foot minimum lot size, then they've got to have at least 80,000 square feet to divide it at all. And then, then they gotta divide it in half. So, you know, if you've got five acres, okay, I can split a 40,000 square foot section off of it, and that's fine. But then we get to 60,000, you know, that's, we're 2.74 acres, I think, something like that. So, you know, start getting, and if you say five acres, and I'm not, not arguing for or against here, but that means no one that has less than 10 acres can divide their property.
Mr. Renssberg?
Mm-hmm.
They could still request a zoning change and get it approved.
They can request.
Or deny.
That's true. They can request to be, you know, in an R20 district instead of an RA district, potentially, I will have to look carefully at that. The other component is they can always request a variance, take it before the Board of Adjustment. It's a number. Anytime there's a number in the ordinance, they can, a variance can be considered.
Any more questions for Mr. Renssberg? All right, at this time, I will hold the, open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against ZA 23-04? Mr. Alman, I believe.
Yes. And it may not have to do with this, but for the land use plan coming later on, this is one reason I put in, or gave you all them sheets. It isn't about a single, a person dividing land. It is a developer developing the land and putting as many houses as he can, and school systems can't support it, and our infrastructure can't support it, our volunteer fire departments can't support it. And that's a one, yes, you need to look at people separating land as far as for family, but it needs to be looked at. I personally think five acres is great, and, and it's just not just for rural preservation, mainly for our kids. Like I said before, teachers, we can't retain teachers, and you can't even retain a bus driver. And so what are you gonna do when you divide all this land up, you've got more kids, more kids? You can build as many schools as you want to, if you ain't got teachers in there, it doesn't matter. And so something to think about. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else speak for or against? Come on, I know you want to. I've been waiting on you. I knew you were, you were turning in your seat, I was just waiting. Come on up, Kelly.
I just, I understand what Bob's saying about this right now, for, for right now, but I don't want us to forget that the planning board and y'all have already approved the five acres. And it's not talking about individuals dividing their land, it's talking about developments and that type of thing that that is trying to protect. It's not talking about the individual that's trying to give their child an acre of land. It's two totally different things. It has nothing to do with, like Bob said, with what he's got here tonight, and I'm not opposed to what he's got here tonight, as long as it doesn't affect or change, once we get the ordinances and everything done for the land use plan that was approved, that they are followed.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right, at this time, I would declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment to amend Section 701 of the Stanley County zoning ordinance as highlighted in attachment B to this agenda item, to require lot sizes to be larger in the RA, R40, R20, and R10 residential districts if either water or sewer is not available, and has been recommended by the planning board. This will help assure that lots are large enough to ensure that distances between wells and septic systems are sufficient.
And Commissioner, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaHawne. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
To add to that, if I may, that this does not have anything to do with the land use plan as it's currently written, and that when that's adopted, this will proceed.
That's correct, sir. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to ask Mr. Renssberg, we pass this change.
Correct.
But concerns that I have as a citizen and other concerns I've heard other citizens mention, not necessarily with the size of the lot, which I guess it is, but I'm concerned about side setback lines.
Okay.
They're 15 feet, so if you've got two lots side by side, that means your house is gonna be 30 feet apart.
Could be, could be as close as 30 feet, that's right.
I wish that our, your committee would look at that and expand that, because to me, if you're out in the country and you're in a neighborhood out there, houses don't need, I mean, 30 feet, a lot more than some of these houses. Some of the houses in the city limits of Alamo are probably seven and a half feet apart.
They are.
But those setbacks need to be looked at, not only the side setback, but the road frontage measurements need to be looked at.
Aye.
And I hope that our county will keep rural living rural. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We'll take, we'll take a look at that. I, and I understand what you're saying, and certainly with the increase in lot sizes, 15 feet is pretty tight. And, yeah, the, what it's worth, our 20, our 20 district, it's 12 feet.
I'm, I'm asking that they look at all of those.
Okay, we will.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Our next item, item number eight, is ZA 23-05, text amendment, group care facility. And again, our presenter is Mr. Renssberg.
All right, so ZA 23-05, text amendments which would allow group care facilities on a parcel of eight acres or larger in the RA residential agricultural and the RR rural recreational zoning districts by issuance of a special use permit to amend the definition, and to amend the definition of group care facility in our ordinance, just to clarify a few things there. So the, as you may be aware, the planning board recommended approval of the text amendment with the added language that would require a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment. We have researched that a little bit, I think we were asked to do that, and found that that is common in many of the counties surrounding this area and throughout the state, and it's not uncommon to see a special use permit as a requirement for that. Group care facility definition would be amended to add that either a nonprofit or any facility licensed by NCD, HHS, under 27G of the Administrative Code could be, you know, could, could qualify. The eight acre requirement, the idea is, of course, to create a little bit of separation between adjoining properties, this, these are for group care facilities, not group care homes. There's a big difference. Group care homes have no more than six clients, okay? And they are allowed any place you have a residential zoning, okay, by state statute, okay? The only thing, and you may have heard, City of Alamo dealt with this a little bit recently, you can have a requirement of distance separation. I think in a city, that may be more important, where you've got, you know, you don't want a whole street of group care homes potentially, you, you might want some separation. But those are group care homes, that's a different animal. This is a group care facility which is, is of 20 people or more, okay? So it's a larger facility for, for treatment of various types, and you may hear more from, from our friends here about this as we, we go through. But anyhow, the, where was I going? The RA district currently, I, I think this is kind of interesting, because currently under our zoning ordinance, the RA district, which is a lot of the county, allows for nursing, rest, or convalescent homes by right, with no acreage restriction whatsoever. So I always think that's kind of interesting, but that's, that's old language, it's been in there like that maybe even since the beginning of the, the ordinance. But, and again, it doesn't affect group homes, just group care facilities, and again, clarifies that definition. Again, I could read through this, but I think Bailey read it through you last time when, and y'all decided to table this, and so I guess it would be up to you, if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, but of course, the goal will be to bring this off the table and maybe consider it tonight.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Renssberg?
Just had a quick question. I spoke with Dawn Allen, you know, she spoke to you from the, from the group, you know, GHA.
GHA, mm-hmm.
And she just had a couple of questions, and she's not necessarily opposed to this, but I'll just read it to you, maybe you can answer it somewhat in general.
Okay, I'll try.
Why do we want to impose requirements on a residential home for this group of individuals when there are no comparable conditions on others, such as it is noted that an RA district allows for nursing, rest, or convalescent home without similar conditions? For instance, how do we distinguish between this group and some others? Does this group impose a greater impact or higher risk on the area? Do not both potentially have individuals with developmental disabilities, physical and mental impairment, substance abuse, et cetera? How do we treat foster care homes, which placements are not all one or two children than a single-family resident? She says, I'm not suggesting that the rule should be changed to be harder on anyone, on everyone, but there may be questions why the rule would apply to some and not others. And I don't quite understand, you know.
It's, it's very complicated when we get into this. There is a difference, of course, between a nursing or, or assisted living facility There is a difference, of course, between a nursing or assisted living facility and a group care facility, but it's, in many ways, but from a zoning standpoint, I look at it as thinking, well, how does this impact the neighborhood or the community? What, how's it affect? I don't see a huge difference in how one would affect a community versus the other. The only difference here is the special use permit, and of course, the eight acres, I guess, requirement that we're putting here. Again, that, when I originally wrote this out and proposed it, it wasn't with a special use permit, it was just with eight acres. And I was concerned, or part of this had come up because of the potential for this type of an activity to happen on that Vicar's Store Road property. There's another property, that's the reason it's got rural recreational district in it, that's also being considered for some similar type of work, although they're trying to figure out how to financially do it and exactly what they wanna do. And that's on the old campground that's behind Patton Mick's Fish House. It includes Patton Mick's Fish House property on Fish, what's it called? Fish Camp Road. So that's, so that's, and that's owned RR. So that's the reason that you get those two districts in there. But it would, again, affect, the RA district is a lot of the county. That's probably 60 or 70, maybe 70% of the county is owned RA. And anyhow, but, but these are very important facilities in many ways, offering services. So, one of our challenges, one of the reasons this has come up is when this got proposed about Vicar's Store Road, and, and we were discussing the possibility of it, we started looking, we had the definition, the basic definition of group pair facility in our ordinance, but nowhere in our ordinance did we allow a group pair facility. It wasn't enlisted use at all. And we thought, well, surely we gotta change that. So we allow this type of facility to be in here and clarify that. And some of this language, of course, is from the, either general statutes from the state administrative code. That's why we have it this way. I hope, I don't, I didn't exactly answer all of Dawn's questions. I know, I've talked with her a couple of times. The goal, of course, is to be fair to everyone. And, and, you know, we might wanna look back at the requirements for nursing and assisted living, but again, I'm kinda like her, I don't wanna make it any more difficult to folks to provide these types of services that we need. Just wanna make it, make it a possibility. At this moment, it's not a possibility.
Well, thank you. She wasn't necessarily against it, she just had these questions she wanted me to answer. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the text amendment. Oh, yeah, okay, never mind.
Almost.
I got, I guess, two questions. One is, this is from 20 or more students.
Right.
And I'm assuming there's guidelines and laws that have to be so much staff associated with that to take care of those. And so that's.
Right.
20 or more is gonna be a fairly large facility. And I'm not against it, but my second thing was, is it's a use permit type deal. If this, if this facility is sold to some other unit, would they not have to have a special permit use facility also?
Special use permits normally run with the land, so, so no. If it's just a transfer of ownership and the type of use continues the same, then you don't, don't have to reapply. If the use changes, or wants to step outside of whatever parameters are established in that special use permit, because Board of Adjustment has a lot of authority, they could put some conditions, buffers, what, you know, who knows, into that. And if something needs to change about that, it'll have to go back before the Board of Adjustment for revision to that special use permit. So, and the other part is, it's licensed, it would be licensed by the state.
I was just hoping that it would, it would stay a good facility.
Right, right. I agree. These, these types of facilities are very much state regulated.
Any more questions? All right, hearing none. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone here would like to speak for or against ZA 23-05, the text amendment for group care facilities? Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board and Commissioner Crump? I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, it's okay. I wanna make a motion to approve the text amendment, allowing group care facilities to be located in the RA and RR zoning districts on lots of eight acres or larger, upon the approval of a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment, as recommended by the planning board. Group care facilities offer an important service to our community and will have no significant negative effects on nearby properties.
I have a motion, Commissioner Crump, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Vice Chairman Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Vows? Motion carries, have a moment. Don't run off, sir. You've got another.
I was hoping.
You're popular tonight.
I was hoping Bailey could be here to do some of this.
Bailey wanna do this one. All right, the next item is item number nine, ZA 23-06, text amendment, section 607-2, section 13-3, adult establishments. And our presenter is Mr. Rensberg.
All right. So the planning department did receive a request from the county's administration to draft some language into the Stanley County zoning ordinance, which would address male or female impersonators who provide entertainment that appeals to a prurient interest. North Carolina General Assembly is considering language which may address this issue statewide, but that hasn't been adopted yet. Currently, the Stanley County zoning ordinance does restrict adult entertainment to the highway business district with a special use permit granted by the Board of Adjustment if certain conditions are met. There are currently no special use permits in place for an adult entertainment, or adult establishment, or use in Stanley County zoning jurisdiction. And there are no proposed ones. The proposed text amendment would change the term adult business. And I'll jump to that real quick here. As you can see, the, under 607.2, it simply says adult businesses. That's the only thing it says. So because our definition and our other language in the ordinance says adult establishments, it makes more sense to clarify, get rid of the word business and put the word establishments, and uses including adult live entertainment. It did not have a definition of adult live entertainment in the ordinance. It just had adult establishment. You can see, again, in yellow, highlights the language that would be changed. It would amend the adult establishment language to include and adult live entertainment, and clarify some of the language, because it simply said, but excluding massage therapy is defined in section 12.1. With 12.1, I don't know why that number was still in there, if it's probably something left over that we didn't catch when we updated the ordinance a couple of years ago, but it should be 13.3, that's where the definitions are. And, and the correct definition is body work therapy establishment, massage and body work therapy. So it clarifies that. Then it takes you, of course, to the adult live entertainment language, which would be added. And that comes from that state statute proposal that's in the North Carolina House that says, "A performance featuring topless dancers, exotic dancers, strippers, or male and female impersonators who provide entertainment that appeals to a prurient interest regardless of whether or not performed for consideration." Planning board decided this was okay. They wanted to make sure that we had added the definition for prurient, which is now what you see there at the bottom. And that is straight from Webster's. And anyhow, they initially voted this, to table this, but of course, as you may know, they held a special meeting on June 19th and decided to, with that addition of the word prurient and its definite, or its definition, added, approved unanimously to recommend it to you for approval. And I'm open to any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Rensberg at this time?
Yes, I got a few. First of all, if I'm not mistaken, because I was at that one last planning meeting, the part about appealing to prurient interest regardless of whether or not performed for consideration. A person who's performing may not intend it to be for a prurient interest. It's all in the receiver or the somebody in the audience. Is that pretty much correct?
Well, correct. You know, obviously, it's what someone witnesses and sees, yes.
Rather than what the intention is. So I got a few, a few scenarios and see how that would fall underneath this. Back when I moved to Stanley County, South Stanley hosted the Stanley County Relay for Life to raise money for American Cancer Society. The final event of the evening was a women's beauty pageant. Men dressed up in women's dresses for the pageant. Children of all ages were in attendance. If Stanley County Relay for Life or any other group were to have a womanless beauty pageant today, would that be okay?
Well, there's no quick answer to that, in that they would not have probably applied for a permit, and they wouldn't have been granted one, because South Stanley High School does not sit in the highway business district. So first problem is, I can't grant a permit.
Correct.
You know, or, or even a special use permit, because it'd have to go before the Board of Adjustment.
Let's assume it was at the Ag Center.
And maybe, I don't know, the Ag Center's actually owned RA, I believe. But anyhow, if it was actually in a highway business district somehow, then of course, again, they're being viola, well, okay, let's go back to the other part. We're complaint-driven. So first off, someone's gonna have to complain that we don't think that the Relay Life activity there is appropriate, and it may be appealing to a prurient interest. Then we'd have to investigate that. Now, of course, chances are the complaint's gonna happen after the event, not before. Now, if it happens before, we could look at it and go, okay, well, one, you're not in highway business district, or you're not appropriate, or you don't have a special use permit, and you can, to get a special use permit, that's gonna take about a month and a half, okay? Because you gotta put that before the Board of Adjustment. And we have to notify adjoining property owners, that sort of thing, for the affected property. But there are lots of steps they would kinda have to get through. If it's after the effect, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do, other than say, almost send them the letter that says, "Don't do it again." If they do it again, then, then our, you know, our situation would have to step in, potentially, one, we'd have to make that judgment, was it prurient or not? That's appealable, because it'd probably be a decision I would have to make, or Tim would have to make as a zoning code enforcement officer. And any decisions we make are appealable to the Board of Adjustment. Board of Adjustment would have to decide that. If the Board of Adjustment, you know, if the person still didn't like what the Board of Adjustment says, that could go before Superior Court, and then the Court of Appeals, and so on, through the state court system. Lord willing, we don't go there. But that's, but that's the potential way to do it. But let's go back, if, if, you know, make, have to make a ruling on that, you know, if some, if the worst, I don't know, worst case. The scenario could go, if someone continues to do, just like any zoning thing, this is a zoning enforcement thing. So if a zoning, if someone continues to do any zoning activity that's illegal by the ordinance, then, you know, we're gonna cite them. We'll work with Jenny, of course, our county attorney, to, to work through that process, but we would, you know, tell them, you know, if you don't stop this, you're gonna be fined. Now, that same $50, $200, $500 a day type fees start kicking in there through that process. So it's, it's a, you know, that's our, that's our only enforcement.
I got a couple more here.
That's probably a longer answer.
Examples that could apply locally. The Uori players.
Right.
You know, right now, the Full Monty the Musical is a pretty popular play going around. Would the Uori players will decide to do that, the Full Monty the Musical? It's about unemployed, middle-aged, overweight men that take to stripping after they're inspired because their wives go to a Chippendale male strip show. And the men are topless. Another one. Would the Uori players be allowed to perform Tootsie, Mr. Doubtfire, Mrs. Doubtfire? I mean, in both those, you think, well, how does that attract a prurient interest? But in both those, in both of those situations, there was a, a man was attracted to the man who was dressed as a woman.
Right.
You have Pin Up Some Pumps. They do a lot of things, they do them in the city limits, and they're a good group of folks, they raise money for charities, they dress up as pinup girls from the 50s to 60s. Would they be allowed to do their beauty shows out in the, in the, you know, outside the municipalities?
Right.
Powderpuff Football. You know, it's not so much with the girls dressed as the guys and play football, but in a lot of these cases, the guys dress as cheerleaders, and it's usually pretty campy. You know, I was thought, back when I was in high school, the Key Club was trying to raise money for a charity, and they did a bikini car wash. And the guys in high school wore their sister's or girlfriend's bikinis and got out there on North Ridgewood Drive on the corner of Eucalyptus, and they had a Saturday morning car wash, and then made the newspaper. Would that be allowed? You know, and recently, the Brazil, the North Carolina Brazilian Arts Project performed in Locust. You know, some people thought that was a little bit, you know, a prurient thing, it was too sexy there. Right now, the Stanley County Dancing with the Stars. I've been to a lot of those performances over the years, and a lot of times, couples who are not married, but they're married to other people, but they're doing couples, they put some pretty, pretty good dances there that are sexual, well, you know, they're just, they do, perform dances together, and the judges refer to them a lot of times as being hot, you know? And it's like, would that be allowed? And last one, Tina Turner passed away. Tina Turner recently passed away. So there's a lot of Tina Turner tribute artists going around. And I know the Stanley County Concert Association, they had an ABBA, you know, tribute art, tribute group a few years ago. Would they be labeled, allowed to have a Tina Turner tribute artist, even though it's a woman, dressed as a woman, imitating a woman out there? Because Tina Turner, you know, she just has a lot of sexual energy in her performances. And lastly, Blue Bay, they have the Elvis Fan Club. Man, Elvis is hot for a lot of women, and some guys, I would assume, too. So you're just trying to keep it real. So these are all things to me that just, I don't know, that's why I'm probably not gonna be able to support this, because there's just a lot of questions. And I don't know the real reason behind this, but we're a free, you know, we talk about freedoms, and I say, doing this would take away a lot of people's freedoms to do stuff with most people would consider pretty, pretty safe, but a few people might just say, hey, we shouldn't have that.
Thanks, sir. Any more questions?
I do, I hear what you're saying, Peter, and I think that you've made some good points, but I don't know that those would actually be prurient, really. I think that we all know what this is about, and I, and I see that you're being, you're, you're playing antagonistically, because, but what this is really about is about some of the drag shows that we're seeing that are coming into a space that could be, it could be dangerous for children to be around. And quite frankly, maybe the people in the Stanley County would not want this here. So I don't know where this came from either. But I think that we have a safety net, as Mr. Rensberg was saying, that we could, if there was someone that wanted to challenge that, you know, if they were going to be doing a play, that they could take that to the board and say, we wanna do this play. And it could be misinterpreted. So would you give us that permission to do that? And I do, and at that point, the members of that board would be in a subjective position, because this is a subjective vote, I do believe. But I'm gonna support it. So at that point, at some point, I wanna make a motion to approve this.
Okay, any more questions? All right, hearing none. I will, at this time, open up the public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against ZA 23-06 text amendment, section 607-2, section 13-3, adult establishments? Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening. I didn't propose this, although I'm certainly for it. I understand questions and objections, and I think it's prudent to think about the implications of any laws that are created. However, as Commissioner Crump alluded to, I think the goal here is to protect children in our community. You know, if the commission decided that they wanted to change the wording in some way to, you know, better help against, I think a lot of the challenge here is, because of our legal system, has lost all practicality and common sense. We spend our time splitting hairs on what a word says when the overall intent is very clear. It's like a pastor said to me the other day, we were in a meeting with some of the city council members, and he said, "If you ask anybody in Stanley County what a drag show is, they know exactly what you're talking about." But yet, when we go to write something in law, it's like we've lost our mind, you know? We don't know how to say things anymore. So anyway, regardless of all of that, I think what I am for, and I think what I believe the majority of people in Stanley County for, is protecting children from inappropriate content that can ruin their lives. And unfortunately, and what, what something like this does... And unfortunately, and what something like this does, is a, an ordinance like this simply prohibits children from being exposed to such content. Once something is categorized as adult entertainment, then that prevents anyone who's under the age of 18 from going. I think that's a very reasonable thing. We're not banning it in the community, although I wouldn't be opposed to that, per se, but we're letting, there's a lot of things that adults do that we don't all agree with, but we let those folks do those things, so long as they're not violating the rights of others. But our children, they don't get to choose. The adults who are responsible for them choose for them. And unfortunately, some adults in our community can't make those decisions well for themselves, right? That's why we got kids being exposed to drug abuse and alcoholism and all that kinda stuff. And that's sad, that is sad. And I really do feel for those families, but because of that, that's why we have a legal system, and that's why we have judicial system, that's why we have police, is to help protect those people who can't protect themselves. So with that being said, you know, I think this ordinance, more than anything, is a statement of who we wanna be as a community. I don't think it's really much more than that. I don't think people are gonna go to a play and, you know, lose their mind. Now, if it's, if people are stripping at a play, yeah, I don't think we should have plays like that, I don't think that's what, I don't think that's what we should be doing, unless they wanna go into the adult entertainment business. But otherwise, I think this is really just about saying, this is who we wanna be as Stanley County, and I think most people here have the good sense to know what is appropriate and what's not, and can decide for themselves. And then, as Mr. Rensberg said, there's a process to go through if people disagree with those decisions. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else speak for or against? All right, hearing none, I will close the public hearing at this time. What's the pleasure of the board?
Discussion now.
We don't have a motion yet. We'll do a motion in a second, then we'll open it up for discussion. All right, ladies and the board.
I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion to approve the text amendment to amend section 607.2 and 13.3 to further define and clarify adult establishment and adult live entertainment. This amendment will eliminate some ambiguity in the ordinance and establish that adult live entertainment includes male or female impersonators who provide entertainment that appeals to a prurient interest.
All right, I have a motion. Second, Commissioner King, any discussion? Commissioner Shudo.
Yeah, I just read off about six or seven things that are considered drag. And you said, "Well, that stuff's okay." You know, this is, it seems like this is all about fear and hate. My gosh, drag has been around for centuries, you know, and it's okay, it's, I don't see a problem with it. And that's just, that's just me, people living their lives, and here we are, we're taking away somebody's freedom. If they, if they wanna do that, let them, let them do that. They had the, the drag show at Tiffany's on Main. I didn't go to it, but people went to it, said it was a hoot, and the Proud Boys, I think, came and protested that. And I just don't understand why, you know, the fear of somebody dressing up in costume. I had, I had a professor at Troy State University, who was a history professor, he dressed every day almost as Clark Gable from Gone With The Wind. That's all I got to say about that.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries six one. Thanks, sir. Is everybody okay? Continue, anybody need to stretch their leg or anything?
Just a couple more.
Yeah, just a couple more.
Log out, where's log out?
All right, we're good? All right, let's carry on. Next item, item number 10, system development fee ordinance proposed fee amendment, amendments. And our presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, per the board's discussion during your annual budget process, we've attached the proposed fee changes in the system development fee ordinance for water and sewer connections of one and a half inches and larger. Attach is that proposed amendment to the fee schedule in the SDFF ordinance, and also a clean version of the revised ordinance for consideration. You'll need to hold a public hearing in advance of making any changes to this, these, these specific fees, and then the board would be free to take action, and included in your packet is the, the notice of public hearing that was included in the, in the Stanley News and Press. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for County Manager Lucas?
Chairman, I do have one.
Yes, sir.
Since the system development fees have been implemented, have we had anyone to pay the one and a half inch fee?
I don't believe we've had any one and a half. I know we had a fairly significant sized one out in Locust for water for a, I'm gonna say it may have been two inch, maybe even larger. That was, that would have been, that was for the, the car wash.
Was that before, I can't remember, was that before this was done in September?
Yeah, they, they paid it. Yeah, they paid it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was that for water and sewer?
That was just water, because sewer is done, but Locust has their own system development fee structure for sewer. It was, it was, I wanna say it was the two, I think it was two inch bill, because I wanna say it was closer to the fifty-eight or fifty-nine thousand dollar mark. I'm not aware of any one and a half inches. I mean, typically, a residential house is gonna be three quarters. There are some residential units that do one inch, even they don't necessarily need to, that do one inch just because of their concerns about water pressure, because they're, they're so far off the road. But they're, you know, a one and a half inch is definitely not normal for residential.
Have we had any developers to pay system development fees, three quarters? Have we had any?
Oh, we've got a lot of developers that pay three quarters, yeah.
Good.
And one inches, yeah.
Good, and that speaks to the gentleman that had public comments. We do charge system development fees for developments that pays for future infrastructure, schools, sewer, water improvements. Those are currently being charged.
Yeah, the current three quarter, we're not proposing, I mean, during the board's discussion, back in during the, we didn't, staff did not propose any changes to the three quarters or the, the one inch, given that the board has been inclined to wanna be a little more restrictive with respect to residential growth in the, in the, you know, certainly in, out in the more rural areas of the county, where there may be water present. Currently, that, those fees are seventy-three hundred dollars just for the system development fee for a three-quarter inch tap. And so, if you're doing ten homes, that's gonna be, you're gonna have to pay, you know, close to eighty thousand dollars just in system development fees. That's not, in addition to the cost of running that extension into the, into that subdivision, plus all the tap fees that would be required, and meter, meter fees for all those. So, yeah, there's, it's a, there's, that, that fee is in place, and that's not proposed to change. Really, the, the reason that staff brought this forward and board discussed this during the budget process was really around economic development, and just making sure that we weren't doing it, having any unintended consequences associated with businesses, small businesses, medium-sized businesses, large businesses, who may be seeking to locate into areas where we have water or sewer services.
Any more questions? All right, thanks, sir. At this time, I will hold a public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against the system development fee ordinance proposed fee amendments? All right, hearing none, I will close the public hearing at this time. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the, approve the new fee schedule.
Thanks, sir. Got a motion by Commissioner King, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Thank you very much. Next item is item number 11, is the 2023 NC ACC Annual Conference Voting Delegates Designation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners will hold their annual conference in August, actually starts in like the 21st, I think, of August, and runs through that Saturday. They actually have a, the, their Board of Delegates meeting that Saturday afternoon, and then they're, they have a reception where they swear in the new, new chairman of their, of their board, and second vice president, and all that, that whole, that whole process. But, and the reception that, that evening and dinner. But there, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is asking for you all to appoint who you want to be your voting delegate at that, that board meeting on that Saturday. I believe it starts at two o'clock. I know that Commissioner Shudo and, I believe, Commissioner King are both planning to attend that conference. I don't know if they're planning to stay through Saturday or not, I know they have plans to at least tend portions of it, so, so they're, at least two, two folks will be up there for a portion of it, so, but anybody can be appointed to be that voting delegate. Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting process.
All right, Commissioner King, Commissioner Shudo, would you like to be an alternate?
I guess, we don't know everyone at all. He got people random, man.
Anyone else? We need a motion on this, or we just, any motion?
Uh, I think so, I think we'd probably need to have a motion second, because it's fairly formal, we gotta send something back to the association.
Second.
All right, are you gonna do an alternate?
Make a motion, Peter Shudo would be the alternate.
Well, he has to do his motion, or I'm gonna have to vote on his motion.
Oh, sorry.
You wanna amend your motion?
And I amend my motion that I'll be the delegate.
Alternate.
Peter Shudo will be the alternate.
Okay. Now, is that a?
Second.
Yeah, anybody, was you gonna second that, Commissioner?
I'll second.
All right, second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Gentlemen, thank you very much for representing. Consent agenda, item number 12.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Shudo, do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda, motion carries seven. Board committee appointments and, announcement said committee appointments, and I will start with Commissioner King.
I think everything's good on my side. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I just wanna thank Sarah for coming out tonight and talking about the library, though I do appreciate the time you put into that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Shudo.
I'll roll through these real quick, just a quick reminder, we've had some outstanding athletes in Stanley County, and they're gonna have the 2023 induction ceremony for the Stanley County Sports Hall of Fame. And Wes Durham is gonna be the keynote speaker, that's gonna be Monday night, a week from today, at 6:30 at the Pfeiffer Gym. And this year's inductees are gonna be Al Andrew, TA McLendon, Shannon Smith, Greg Spate, and Kwan Sternman. And I just give a shout out to TA McLendon, touchdown anytime, he was such a phenomenal athlete, and he's long past due to being there. And I tell you what, that guy gave his body for football. He, he plowed ahead and he got his body beat up, and he's a legend in North Carolina state lore. And I think the, they started the, the instant replay and filming all football games because of the controversial fumble between NC State and North Carolina in that game. People say he scored, but they brought it, but they weren't filming that game. Okay, Red Lauder, I believe, was North Stanley, Wake Forest, he was the seventh pick in the Major League Baseball draft by the Cincinnati Reds. I think that was yesterday or the day before, so yesterday. So that's fantastic, and he was the ACC Male Athlete of the Year, has, bunches also won a lot of numerous awards, and he took, he helped lead the team, and they went all the way to, I believe, the semifinals at the College World Series in Omaha. And then, just real quick, a workday, I had one of my workdays with Darnell Almond, we went out on the boat on July the third. Yes, I did, see, word travels fast, man, word travels fast. They're all about boater safety, and we even went by Commissioner's Lawhouse to see if he was out there on the porch to pick you up. But he said, he said that you wanna come out and ride with him one night.
I do, and I was probably inside in the air conditioning.
But I tell you what, they were all, I rode with them for three hours, and I was fine riding with them, but I'm a child that tended to get motion sick, and I always got that, I always got the window seat, where we went from New York to Florida and Florida to New York. And I tell you what, when they stopped somebody to do the safety checks, and I'm out there and the waves are going, man, after three hours, I was getting a little queasy, man. So all the words of the Sheriff's Department now is, "Yeah, man." Commissioner Shudo whipped out on us, he left. But I got, it was hot, and I just, the motion of the ocean. And they said they had about 600 boats out there for the fireworks for the Fourth of July, and they said it was beautiful, but they said it just got crazy out there when people were leaving and the waters were rough. And I give them credit, because they, I've worked with a lot of people, not that, and the sheriffs and the deputies, they're always serious, but these guys on the boat, the Wildlife Commission, they are dead serious about making sure you have the proper flotation things on the boat, those kids have to wear a flotation device, you better have your registration and everything else, because it's all, all about safety. And one, one more quick note, is that I just wanna acknowledge the passing of Richie, Richie Starnes. I don't know how many of y'all did you meet, probably, he was here when you were on the board there. What a great guy, he was a hard-nosed reporter, he was the old journalist, and he'd ask tough questions. I remember one time after a contentious meeting, he wrote an article about it, I mean, I said some things, and some people said some bad things about me, like often happens, and he put that in the newspaper. And people said, and, and some people came up to you, said, "Man, Richie wrote that, he just trashed you in the article." I'm like, no, he didn't, he reported exactly what I said, and he reported exactly what those people said about me. And that's what a report, a reporter does. But evidently, he was, you know, with friends and stuff over the weekend, and he went to his room, and they don't know what happened, but he, he passed, looks like he passed in his sleep, so rest in peace to Richie, Richie Starnes. I know this was a loss for you guys, because a lot of y'all worked with him for years.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Crump.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatley. Commissioner Lawhouse.
We have a new airport director effective July the 17th, I think. Randy Shank's gonna be joining us as, well, he's already a county employee, but he will be the new airport director, Ken Swearingen, will be retiring as of July 31st, I think. And I have an airport report for the month of June. There were 2,998 operations, total of 1,255 landings, a total of 1,450 takeoffs, go-arounds were 235, and over flights, which means they flew over the airport but didn't land, 58. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Vice Chairman Barbie.
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and Richie was, Richie was a good guy. Richie reported it and reported it fair, and, you know, you have to, there's no fake news with Richie, and that's, you know, I don't mind if people report the news, I just, sometimes I don't like hearing their opinions, that's not the news, but, no offense, Charles. But anyway, again, thank y'all for coming tonight. Our next meeting is August the 7th, so, yes, August the 7th. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We can stay as long as y'all want to, if you'd like. And a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.